Mayor-elect Philip Jones. Okay, no others? Got you. Good evening. Good evening. I'm George Parker, the proud superintendent of Newport News Public Schools, and I have the honor of welcoming you to the school board's oath of office ceremony. We are pleased to have you join us this evening to witness the oath of office of three of our school board members who were re-elected by their constituents. Continuing their service this evening will be Dr. Terry Best, South District. Mr. You can give him a round of applause. There you go. Mr. Douglas Brown, North District. And Mrs. Lisa Searls-Law, Central District. Mr. Gary Hunter, who was our at-large candidate and has a work commitment, so he received his oath of office yesterday. All of our school board members-elect will begin their new four-year term of service on January 1st. At this time, before getting started with the swearing-in, I'd like to acknowledge our mayor-elect, who's joining us this evening, Mr. Philip Jones. Good to see you, sir. Now, to present the oath of office to our school board members-elect, please join me in welcoming the Newport News Clerk of the Circuit Court, the Honorable Angela Reason. And I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Before beginning, I would also like to acknowledge Councilman-elect Cleon Long and Councilman-elect Curtis Bethany. We are going to begin with school board member Douglas C. Brown. If you would please join me at the podium. Raise your hand on the bell. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Douglas C. Brown.
Douglas C. Brown.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a school board, excuse me, as a school board member.
As a school board member.
Of the North District.
Of the North District.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
To begin on January 1st.
To begin on January 1st.
2023.
2023.
And begin on December, excuse me, and end on December 31st.
And end on December 31st.
2026.
2026.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations again. Thank you so much. Congratulations again. Next, Dr. Terry L. Best. And she would like her family to come up with her. Would you like your mom to hold the Bible for you? That's all right. Mrs. Best, if we'd have you in the front, please.
I, Terry L. Best.
I, Terry L. Best.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a school board member.
As a school board member.
South District.
South District.
For the city of Newport News.
For the city of Newport News.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
To begin on December, excuse me, on January 1st, 2023.
To begin on January 1st, 2023.
And end on December 31st, 2026.
And end on December 31st, 2026.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lisa Searls-Law. You want your baby to hold the Bible? All right. If you will please raise your hand and repeat after me.
I, Lisa R. Searls-Law.
I, Lisa R. Searls-Law.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As a Newport News school board member.
As a Newport News school board member.
Central District.
Central District.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
Starting on January 1st, 2023.
Starting on January 1st, 2023.
And ending on December 31st, 2026.
And deci- and ending on December 31st, 2026.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. Congratulations to all of our re-elected school board members. Your oaths will be put to public record tomorrow morning. If you would like a copy of them, please let me know, and I will be sure to get with your school board clerk. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reason. I would like to take a few moments to acknowledge the families and friends of our school board members-elect. Please stand and be recognized at this time. Any families, friends who've joined us this evening to support your school board members? We know this is also we know this is also a huge commitment for you as well. You have to support our board members through many, many nights. Some nights are rough nights, rougher nights than others. But we appreciate your support and your presence here this evening as they're sworn in for another term. This concludes our 2022 oath of office ceremony. Thank you for joining us. The school board meeting will begin in a few moments. You're welcome to stay, and please have a good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Parker, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching by television and online. Mr. Hunter has an excused absence this evening. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Samaya Day. I'll let you correct me when you get to the mic. Perry, she is a 12th grader from Woodside High School. Ms. Perry, please come forward and tell us just a little bit about yourself.
Hello. As you said, I'm a 12th grader with Woodside. I am in the magnet program. I'm in creative writing. And my name is pronounced Samadi. Everyone calls me Sam, though. It's totally fine. I'm really proud to be here tonight because around this time, two years ago during COVID, I legit did not think I would make it this far, so I'm really proud. And I'm really happy to be representing my mom and all of Woodside's creative writing program here tonight.
Thank you.
For the invocation, I'll be reading "Raising Their Hands" by Julia Lasella. Sometimes I dream about my students. Their pink palms, red and raw. One student, seven feet tall. His long back hunched over his desk, his arm out and above him. He could be waving or stopping a train. Another student wears eyeliner for the stage. She bends from the ribs, her body forming a tiny C. Her hand up, sun- as a white cap. Some days, they frighten me. Put your hands down and tell them. Shout, explode, scream it. Instead, they look at me and smile, the way they would at foreigners who don't speak their language. That's how they've changed. That's how they changed me. Now I wait until I see a scatter of fingers, and then I choose. Yes, your palm, your hand. Your arched spine, you with your idea. Speak. I'm also, I'm also reading the Pledge of Legions.
Please do.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for your leadership this evening. And I know you have some family members and possibly Woodside family members joining us this evening. Would you all please stand? Thank you. So I would appreciate you taking your time to come and share, and it's always good for us to see you because we do what we do for you.
Thank you for having me this afternoon.
You are welcome. Thank you.
And she turns 18 on New Year's.
So the next item on tonight's agenda is school board recognitions. Dr. Parker, please join me at the podium. And for our first recognition, if I could get our North District board members, Marvin Harris and Douglas Brown to join as well.
Good evening. I have the honor of presenting this month's recognitions. The Purple Star designation is awarded to schools that demonstrate military-friendly practices and a commitment to military students and families. Virginia is home to a large population of active-duty guard, reserve, and veteran armed services members, and our public schools educate thousands of military-connected students. This evening, we're proud to announce that Katherine Johnson Elementary School earned designation as a Purple Star school. Joining us this evening to accept recognition on behalf of their school community is the school's leadership team. Please congratulate Dr. Angela Montpass, the principal. Please come forward. Dr. Heather Cobb, Assistant Principal. Brittany Schufert, Professional School Counselor. She unable to join us. Katie Beach, a Family and Community Engagement Specialist. And Tiffany Jones, Coordinator of Family and Community Engagement. The Virginia Department of Education awards this designation to schools that meet their high standards for service to military-connected students and their families. To be named a Purple Star school, its staff must complete training in meeting the needs of military students and name a designee to serve as a point of contact for their military families. Purple Star schools must also offer online information specifically designed for military families, and they must offer new students peer support to ease their transition. At Katherine Johnson Elementary, a team of 4th and 5th grade students known as Anchored for Life Team members welcome new students, support students who are moving, and support military students going through the deployment of a parent. For one of the schools, for one of its schools to be awarded the Purple Star, Newport News Public Schools must also demonstrate its support for military families. In September 2021, the Newport News School Board passed a resolution committing to support the approximately 6,500 military-connected students in the school system through ongoing professional development for teachers to prepare them to best meet the needs of this population and through focused communication to keep these families informed of the schools and community resources available to them. Newport News Public Schools is proud to boast two schools have earned Purple Star status, with General Stanford Elementary being named last school year. So please join me in another round of applause for Katherine Johnson Elementary School for being named a Purple Star school. Our next recognition is a resolution of recognition in honor of school board member John Ely, who was recently elected to serve on the Newport News City Council. Mr. Ely, would you please come forward? The school board has an award and a resolution for Mr. Ely. The resolution reads, Newport News Resolution of Recognition Honoring John R. Ely III. Whereas the Newport News School Board, as a duly-elected body, is charged with establishing and maintaining a system of public schools within the city of Newport News, and whereas the Newport News School Board's operational goals are to develop policies which promote student achievement and the wise management of resources, and whereas the members of the Newport News School Board hold an office of shared power and responsibility, and whereas John R. Ely III was elected by his constituents to serve on the Newport News School Board beginning July 1, 2016, and was subsequently re-elected to serve another term beginning July 1, 2020. And whereas Mr. Ely has made meaningful contributions to school board topics, or, excuse me, meaningful contributions to school board discussion on topics of great significance to students, staff members, and the community. And whereas Mr. Ely devoted himself to furthering the mission of ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready by championing the arts and workforce development and serving as a passionate advocate for his community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newport News School Board expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to John R. Ely III for his dedicated service to our students, families, and the citizens of Newport News, and wish him best, wish him the best, and continued success in his future endeavors. And now be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution be spread across the minutes of the meeting for all to acknowledge. And it is signed by all the members of the school board and the superintendent. Thank you, and again, we congratulate Katherine Johnson Elementary School, and we wish Mr. Ely all the best, and we know you'll continue to support public education from the city council. This concludes this month's recognitions. At this time, we'll take a seven-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school this month's school board spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
Students at Sanford Elementary want every student to feel welcome, especially students who are brand-new to the school and might feel out of place. So, for the fourth year, the Kindness Club invited new students to New Kids on the Block. After school one day in late October, the fifth graders in the Kindness Club welcomed seventeen third-through-fifth graders who are now calling Sanford their home school. The gathering also included a few staff members and school leaders who are also new to Sanford. To get to know one another better, students and staff played a fun game of student search. This was an engaging way to find out which one of their new friends rides the bus to school, which foods they like to eat, their favorite sport, and who was born in a different state. For the students new to Sanford, this game revealed some of the common interests they already share with their new classmates. And there are some Kindness Club members who were new kids on the block themselves just a few years ago, giving them a chance to pass on the kindness. New Kids on the Block wrapped up with a fun pizza party, while school leaders gladly served their students. And the New Seagulls received goodie bags full of brand-new school supplies. And hopefully, the experience left their hearts full as they were warmly welcomed to Sanford Elementary by their new friends. Three hundred runners and walkers came together this year in front of Hilton Elementary for an exciting seasonal tradition. Organized by longtime race director Amy Klinkenbeard and Hilton's dedicated PTA, the Ninth Annual Hilton Hustle 5K and One Mile Fun Run brought a community together like no other event can. Held at the end of October, many students and families arrived in creative costumes, enjoying the great sponsors and businesses offering some pre-race entertainment. Thanks to Kevin Joyce at Financial Security Management, every Hilton Elementary student was invited to participate in the One Mile Run completely free. After a quick sprint, families, teachers, and runners took off for a scenic 3.1-mile tour through historic Hilton Village. Along the way, CMU's Women's Lacrosse Team cheered on runners as they made their way to the finish line. And just like past years, CMU's Men's Basketball Team kicked off the morning festivities by leading everyone in dynamic stretches to warm up, and they handed out coveted dog tags to all of the One Mile finishers. Beyond the support of collegiate student athletes, the generosity of local businesses who sponsored the event allowed this year's Hilton Hustle to raise over $10,000 for the students and educators at Hilton to support and enhance classroom instruction and creative learning opportunities. Newport News Public Schools is proud to have two schools recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as Purple Star Schools. This school year, Katherine Johnson Elementary received this award by meeting the high standards and multiple requirements necessary to support the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. With some military children moving every two to three years, Johnson's Anchored for Life Club welcomes new students, supports students transitioning to other schools, and connects with military students going through the deployment of a parent. The Newport News School Board continues to support the approximately 6,500 military-connected students in the school system by offering ongoing professional development for teachers and keeping families informed through focused communication. In 2021, General Stanford Elementary was awarded the Purple Star Status, which schools maintain for three years. The Virtual Learning Academy at Point Option is a wonderful choice for students and families that need to continue learning remotely. This option gives students at all grade levels flexibility in where and when they learn, along with equitable access for a diverse community of learners. But unlike most virtual learning environments that are offered to students, Point Option's Virtual Learning Academy makes remote learning personal. The educators strive to connect with each of their students beyond a digital screen by inviting them to participate in socially engaging activities. So the Virtual Learning Academy offers in-person support once a week, allowing students to personally attend a day of classes at Point Option. This school year, elementary students were invited for the first time to join the Virtual Learning Academy. Every Wednesday, kindergarten-through-fifth grade students can ride the bus or be dropped off for an exciting day of fun educational activities. In each of their classrooms, educators use this special day to focus on hands-on learning experiences. Science experiments, math activities, and creative art projects are perfect for in-person support days. Teachers can take time to support individual students that need additional help, while the students enjoy getting to know their classmates as they work together on a range of activities. With only one in-person support day a week, Wednesdays are jam-packed with fun and engaging learning. And once a month, educators surprise their students with a special treat, encouraging them to attend every week. Newport News Public Schools fully realizes that students thrive academically, emotionally, and socially by being around their teachers and classmates. At Point Option's Virtual Learning Academy, this belief is put into practice to support learning remotely and in person whenever possible. During the Saturday before Thanksgiving, Sedgfield Elementary was bustling with generosity. Thanks to an ongoing partnership with St. Andrew's Episcopal Church, 100 Sedgfield families received complete Thanksgiving meals. To fill each basket, church members donated over 50 turkeys and collected monetary donations to purchase additional food items. Sedgfield staff also provided a number of canned goods, while fresh vegetables were graciously donated by Fuller's Raw Bar in Hampton. Select families were invited to drive by the school on Saturday afternoon to collect their gift. For families who were unable to pick up their basket, church volunteers and Sedgfield educators gladly delivered the baskets personally. At the same time, State Senator Mamie Locke kicked off her Drive Out Hunger food drive to benefit the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. Volunteers and Sedgfield's SCA student leaders were excited to accept food donations in front of Sedgfield. And in return, donors received a hot dog lunch and free books for kids. Whether families were receiving meals or dropping off food donations, Sedgfield's partnerships made a big difference in our community.
I hope you enjoyed this month's school board spotlight. And during our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of our meeting. As advertised, citizens must submit comments via email up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicate your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. Valerie D. Fashion.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening, Dr. Parker and the school board members. My name is Valerie D. Fashion, and I'm here tonight again to advocate for my grandchildren and the other children attending Newport News Public Schools. I'm concerned about the challenges that the children are having because they're below their grade level. When and how did it become okay to tell students that it's all right not to spell words correctly? I, I have a problem with that. And then they take those incorrect spelling words, and they place those papers on the walls of the school. This is not helping our children become successful people later on. So I'm not telling them to spell was, W-U-Z, and I don't correct it. Then you spell it because, B-E-C-A-U-S, leaving the E off, and they're telling them it's okay. I'm having a problem. It's a lot of words. Why is it okay that we don't have textbooks? There's no reading. There's no spelling. There's no math textbooks. We got the eureka math that the kids don't understand. They don't spell words correctly. They're not, their spelling is not done correct. The science, they got pieces of paper that they get from So Whippy Kids, Super Teachers, and, and, um, what's the other website? They're pulling off this website, Estacy, and all these other websites. And we're giving these children papers to glue in composition notebooks. I ask them, where are their textbooks? They show me the composition notebook. These children don't even know what a textbook is. When my kids was in Newport News Public School System, they had textbooks. They all had textbooks. And my son, I even had a copy at my home for him because he was one of these kids that didn't like to do his work. And again, your schools offer these different programs. At one school, several schools, you have SongSkip, which is a musical program. I think it's a great program. Some of the schools don't have that. Music is good educationally and for the brain. The students don't know the basic arithmetic. Addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. They're having a problem. Again, where are they going to go? How are they going to go get a job when they don't know the basics, the basic skills that's going to help them be successful? You need that in order to get a job. The school needs to try to implement a catch-up program. Some of your schools, I think they have what they call a re-lee. I don't think they're offered that all the schools. You ask the kids the multiplication table. I'm standing in the door. Three times seven, four times eight. These children don't know. And my question back to them, if you don't know how to do multiplication, how are you going to do division? And they expect to go on to the next level. I believe that we can restore the promise of public school by simply investing more into our schools and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Fashion.
All right.
I really appreciate your time. Is Sarah Marches?
Good evening.
Hello.
School Board, Dr. Parker. My name is Sarah Marchesi, and I'm a parent of four Newport News Public School students. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider your current communication policies and procedures. I have two students that attend Warwick High School. In the beginning of November, as I'm sure you are all aware, an assistant principal was arrested on charges for when he was working at another school system. I am not here about that specific case, but about the response or the lack of response by the central office after that arrest. Over the years, there have been incidences that I felt were of such magnitude that they warranted a response or a statement from the superintendent or from the central office. After such incidences, I felt discouraged, but I never said anything. After this most recent arrest, I felt that I could not keep quiet any longer. Information spreads so quickly today. Within hours and sometimes even minutes, people begin to share and talk on social media through texts and messages. The day that this assistant principal was arrested, my phone was full of texts and messages from parents and students asking if I had heard anything or I knew of any details. The arrest was made that morning around 11:00 a.m., I believe. I did not go back and check that. However, by that evening, I had not heard one word from Newport News Public Schools. Not one word, nothing, and not a word to the students. I'm not asking you to share details that you are not legally able to share. I'm simply asking for a statement, an acknowledgement of the incident. I want to know that you are actively reflecting on hiring practices and other ways to ensure that predators don't find their way into our schools and our students are safe. With the case at Warwick, I am certain that it was a trigger for survivors of abuse. By not even acknowledging it, I felt that you communicated that such things should just be swept under the clause, swept under the rug, not discussed. As we head into 2023, I beg you to take another look and reexamine your communication policies and procedures. I know that it is important to the school system. I was recently asked to participate in a focus group of Newport News Public School parents where communication was discussed. I'm not sure what the data or the response to those focus groups will reveal, but I can tell you firsthand that I am discouraged by the lack of communication. I want to be clear, I'm not talking about phone calls and emails about application deadlines and programs that the school system is offering because I really think that you guys are doing a great job with that. But I'm talking about these larger things that have happened in the school system. I want them to be acknowledged and just being open and transparent and showing leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments and thoughts this evening to both of our, our guests. We will now move on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the work session on November 15, 2022, and 3.02 minutes from the regular meeting on November 15, 2022, 3.03 minutes from the closed session on November 15, 2022. Also, we have 3.04, financial report, including the revenue report for November 2022, the expense report for November 2022, child nutrition reports for November 2022, 3.05, the personnel report, and 3.06, resolution authorizing city attorney to petition the circuit court to issue a rate of election to fill a vacancy, and then 3.07, budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, on item 3.06, one question. And congratulations again to Mr. Ely. But just in regards to the, we could have maybe our counsel discuss, why isn't this being handled by the school board as opposed to the appears to be handled by city council in terms of Mr. Ely's vacancy?
To petition for the circuit court.
Circuit court.
To allow us to do an election.
Right.
Yeah, our, our office is petitioning as counsel for the school board. So the petition would be filed on behalf of the school board. And so this resolution is just authorizing, it's kind of a formality, authorizing the city attorney to go ahead and file on your behalf, on the school board's behalf, to have the, excuse me, the writ of election issued by the circuit.
So, and if I'm, if I'm understanding this, writ does make it so that we can hold a election at the next general election in November? Okay. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Surles Law?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Up next, we have the superintendent's personnel recommendations. May I have a motion to approve those recommendations?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Irene Lopez, Supervisor of Budget, and Katherine Shehan Smith, Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Mrs. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Surles Law?
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Great. So, Dr. Parker, would you please introduce the administrative appointments?
Yes, Madam Chair. And we have two, two appointees this evening who are, should be familiar faces in our school division. They are internal candidates. And we have, uh, two, two appointees this evening who are, should be familiar faces in our school division. They are internal candidates. I'd like to first introduce Irene Lopez as the new supervisor of budget. And Ms. Lopez, please stand. There you go. All right, let's give a round of applause. And Ms. Lopez is currently working on a Master of Business Administration degree with concentration in accounting from Keller Graduate School of Management. She has a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration with a concentration in Human Resources Management and an Associate Degree in Business Administration from Strayer University. Ms. Lopez currently works as the Senior Bit Budget Analyst and has also worked as a payroll analyst for Newport News Public Schools. Ms. Lopez has worked as a payroll supervisor for Hampton City Schools and a payroll manager for S I J Limited and as an office manager of Human Resources Operations for D T H Corporation. Congratulations, Ms. Lopez, on this next assignment and opportunity for leadership. And as you introduce yourself to the board, please, if you have any friends or family joining you, please feel free to introduce them.
Um, I have my secretary, another with me, and my youngest of our five kids with us. Our other kids are unfortunately at a basketball game, so we're here to attend to them. Um, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to Scarlett. Um, she's been a great mentor, um, for many years. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations. I saw Scarlett get excited.
Uh, I would, my next appointee here is Katie Shehan Smith as the new instructional supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts. And, uh, Ms. Ms. Shehan Smith has, there you go. I was waiting for the applause. Um, Ms. Ms. Shehan Smith has a postgraduate cert certificate in Educational Leadership Administration from George Washington University. She has a certificate of school leadership from Liberty University. Also, Ms. Shehan Smith has a master's degree in education and a bachelor of science in communications and public relations from Old Dominion University. Ms. Shehan Smith currently works as the program administrator for Woodside Center, Woodside High School's Center for Arts and Communications for Newport News Public Schools. She has worked as a dance program teacher for school, for the School of Arts Magnet Program for York County Schools, and Ms. Shehan Smith has worked as an instructor for the Institute for Dance. We'd like to congratulate you, Ms. Shehan Smith, for this position. And as you introduce yourself, could you please, uh, also introduce any friends or family who are joining you this evening?
Absolutely. I am ecstatic and honored to continue to serve arts education in Newport News Public Schools. Um, I have my forever principal, Dr. Wendy Nichols, here, um, without whose leadership I know I would not be prepared for this position. Of course, my wonderful husband and our beautiful daughter, our others, is tuned in from home, and I'm excited to join Dr. Jones and the curriculum development team. Um, and if I can just take a moment, Mr. Ely, I know you're, you're exiting, but I, I do want to thank you for your advocacy for the arts um, on the school board and hope that you will continue that in the city council role, because we know how important it is, and just excited to continue the work. So, thank you, school board, for the opportunity.
So, congratulations. That concludes our appointments for this evening. Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, and welcome, welcome to the family and for growing our family in a way that best meets the needs of our students. So, the next item on the agenda, section four, action items. On the agenda this evening, we have 4.01, proposed F Y twenty-three legislative programs. For Dr. Parker.
Uh, Madam Chair, I think I'll call Mrs. Brooks. Oh, no, Mr. Pat Finneran, excuse me. There in the back, up to the podium.
Happy to let Ms. Brooks take over, if you'd like to. Thank you, and, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, Madam Chair and Vice Chairman, Mr. Dr. Parker, members of the board, and everybody watching. Um, thank you for, uh, this opportunity to, to present, uh, the legislative, draft legislative program again. Last month, uh, as you recall, we, we went over, um, all of the, the entire legislative program. Uh, however, there was one addition at that meeting, and tonight, instead of going over the whole thing again, I'll just go over that one, um, addition, which is, uh, related to school facility funding. Michelle, do we have? So, school facility funding, um, just briefly, um, there's a huge backlog of, of need, of course, as we all know. Uh, about $25 billion is needed to replace all schools over 50 years old in the state. This year, uh, the General Assembly dedicated one and a quarter billion, uh, to school facilities. That's a one-time shot, though, so there's another almost $24 billion still left out there if we were going to replace, um, all the aging schools. The, a new, new position, um, really revolves around a concept called the School Facilities Capital Reserve Fund. And I'm going to try to see if I can get all the way down to that. This would allow local boards to establish, uh, by law, a capital reserve fund to dedicate unexpended local, unexpended local, and I say local, operating funds for school division facilities only. Um, this capital reserve fund, uh, really does a number of things. It, uh, first of all, I gotta say, the, uh, because of the Dillon Law in Virginia, we have to actually ask for the a- ability to create a reserve fund and, and to make that legal. Uh, but this fund would allow school divisions to deposit unexpended funds at the end of the year uh, into a savings account that's dedicated specifically for capital, uh, improvements. Uh, the unexpended local operating funds, uh, that would be transferred to the fund would be designated for specific projects named by the school board. Uh, and the funds could only be used for those specific projects. Uh, and the fund would be ongoing, so the school board could, uh, save up funds year after year after year for some major projects. So that, in a nutshell, is the, the latest, um, and the only new addition to this legislative program. And I don't know if anybody has any questions or has some comments about it as well.
Madam Chair, I would just comment that I appreciate all the, the work, uh, that the board has, um, put into drafting this capital reserve fund idea. I think that it's an idea whose time is long past. Come, it's a very simple idea of, uh, no different than, uh, you all have, um, than citizens have in their own, their savings account, right? So how would you, uh, uh, s- save up for a significant expense? You would have a savings account, and you'd save up for it, and then you would budget and, and, um, uh, and, and spend the money accordingly. And this does, uh, precisely that for us, and so I'm excited about having this tool in our toolbox for, um, the desperate needs that we have in the capital area.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And I just, I want to, um, piggyback off of that. Mr. Brown, because obviously, these are, these are positions. We'll see what happens with them. Uh, but I think it would also be good to sort of, in a parallel fashion, ex, I know there are localities that have had a sort of gentleman's or woman's agreement with their city councils to do some similar things. Uh, it'd be interesting to explore some of that, you know, not knowing what the future may hold at the state level. I think we could also accomplish it uh, in another path, too, possibly.
Okay, and we are looking at a, uh, you know, uh, finding a legislative sponsor for this legislation, and I hopefully will have that done soon, and we'll get that out to you, uh, once it's written.
Okay. And Mr. Finneran, I guess, I know I say it frequently, but thank you for the work that you, uh, do on this in support of the board's, um, directives.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
And I think I'll be back a little bit later tonight.
I think you will.
Thank you.
Great. So, do I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve, um, item 4.01 on the agenda. The legislative, proposed legislative program.
Second that motion?
Thank you. Do I have discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment for the record. Um, while I do support a number of the initiatives on here, there are some I have some concerns about. Uh, for example, being a citizen of Newport News, um, the option for the extra 1% sales tax. I know in other areas, we tax a little higher than other localities, so, um, just, um, I'll explain that I do support some, have some reservations about others, so that would explain my position.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Aiman?
Against.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries five one.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, 4.02, new course proposal, F Y twenty-three, twenty-four. I do believe we received a presentation on this. Dr. Parker?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Jones presented the new course proposals at the, uh, November meeting and stands at the ready if there are any questions regarding, uh, those course proposals. And I'm looking in the audience here for Dr. Jones. I think she's hiding back there. There you go.
Here she is.
Don't hide. Come on, come on. If there are any questions. All right.
All right, do we have any questions? I guess you can go back and hide. Do I have a motion for, uh, item 4.02?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item 4.02, course, the new course proposal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And do I ha, oh, do I have any questions? All right, let's call the roll.
Mrs. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Great, thank you so much. We get excited when we have new courses and new opportunities for our students. So next on the agenda this evening is 4.03, proposed F Y twenty-two, twenty-three calendar revisions. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you have, uh, a copy of the calendar? Um, Madam Chair and the board, uh, at this, this afternoon's work session, we took a glimpse at how we are looking at assessment moving forward, uh, to use that data to impact instruction. And our teachers are challenged, uh, now more than ever, to work with students who need to make uh, more than a one-year's gain in their ability to read, uh, write, communicate, and think mathematically. Uh, consequently, lesson planning requires teachers to be more strategic in how they design learning experiences for students, uh, the use of pre-assessment data, identified skilled gaps, and teachers must continuously readjust plans to teach prior learnings, uh, prior, prior skills before they can add on new information. Uh, that requires additional planning. Uh, in collaboration with our principals and teacher leaders, uh, we have, uh, a recommendation that moves forward to provide additional planning time for our teachers moving into the new year. Uh, this calendar represents those proposed, um, adjustments. Um, the first adjustment would be on January 2nd. Um, this date traditionally a, a federal holiday. If it falls on, if the first of, um, the year falls on a, on a, a Sunday. Most divisions do still offer school on that day, and Newport News' current calendar has, um, January 2nd as a school day. Uh, the proposal is to make that a planning day for teachers on January 2nd, the first day from the winter break. Um, March 13th, this date follows a student day off on March 10th for teacher P D and parent conferences. Um, proposed date would create a, a long, a long weekend for families to plan activities and arrange for daycare and, and, and so forth. But that day would also provide additional opportunities, uh, for, uh, for teacher planning. April 10th is the other change. Um, this date is the date after spring break. Again, coming after a break, allowing our staff members to have opportunities to plan uh, while students are, are out that day, would, would give them a better opportunity to better prepare students for the latter part of the year in the fourth quarter. And the adjustment of the 19th would make that an instructional day. That day is currently a planning day for, for staff. Uh, so those are the adjustments. This adjustment, as I indicated, would, um, would involve two, uh, 2.5 days of planning. Um, that's, that's not in the current school calendar. We believe that our staff will use these days wisely to better prepare for the third and the fourth quarter uh, and better prepare students for, um, for outcomes as they move into, uh, testing in the May and June windows. Uh, so our recommendation this evening is to support, uh, this, um, request from our bill, from our building leaders that originated from our building leaders and make the adjustment to the, to, um, to the current 2022, 2023 school year calendar. And, uh, my staff or I can answer any questions that the board may have regarding those adjustments.
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Comments, yes.
Okay, um, one of the questions I did ask Dr. Parker regarding the calendar was, um, if we had input from the staff and from, from teachers and from administrators. And he said that they actually brought these suggested changes to the, to, um, his staff. So I just want teachers to know and staff to know, we are listening, and, and we want to do what, to help you to do what's best for students.
Thank you.
So we hope this will, this will aid you in that.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
So, I'll make another, uh, I'll make a comment, which is also a confirmation question. So it appears that January 2nd, March 13th, and April 10th, we are adding three additional full days of, full planning days for our staff. And this is largely in response to requests from the staff, um, to have additional planning, planning days and planning time.
And, and, uh, just to make, make a, a point of clarification, it's 2.5 because one of the days that's moved to a full day was a, was a half day.
Okay.
So it's 2.5 days additional, uh, planning time, uh, unencumbered planning time.
Unenc- un- unenc- right, that, that phrase, unencumbered planning time. Want all the teachers and staff to hear that, um, that phrase ring, ring out far and wide, unencumbered planning time.
Okay. So, do we have a motion, uh, for this, um, calendar?
Sure, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept item, action item 4.03, proposed F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, calendar revisions. Second.
Second.
Thank both, all of you. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Aiman?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. So then the next item this evening is 4.04, revised policies. Uh, Dr. Parker, did you have any comments for this evening on the revised policies? I know they are, um, ones that we have taken some time to, to spend with, uh, previously.
I would like to first thank the board for your consideration and, uh, diligence in, in reviewing the policies. So as we bring them forward, they're in a, um, better position to be moved, to move forward. I have Mrs. Brooks here. I believe she has some remarks regarding, uh, some of the discussions around the policies that are presented this evening for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Madam. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, the chairman asked me to speak to just two of the policies that were tabled from earlier discussions. And the first was student schedules and course loads. And, um, the new provision in that policy will allow students who fail both semesters of a required English course to take two English classes at the same time the following year. Now, our standards are recursive with the level of rigor changing between grade levels and with each grade level having a specific focus, such as American literature in grade 11 and British literature in grade 12. However, the domains of reading, writing, communication, and research are the same. So the provision will allow our students to take multiple English courses if appropriate, particularly in working with our students to graduate on time, and it will require the principal's approval to do so. Our second policy that was tabled from earlier was our school library media center materials policy. And that policy was tabled because at the time, the board had not approved a policy on instructional materials with sexually explicit content. Since that time, the board has approved a policy on materials with sexually explicit content, which did occur at your November 15th meeting. So we have added a reference to our policy on school library media materials to reference that policy because those, um, library materials will be reviewed in accordance with that policy, so that reference is included.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications.
You're quite welcome.
When we take time to revisit policies, I think it's very important for the public to understand, too, why we're doing so. So have any questions? Does any, any board members have any questions regarding? Okay. So what we will do, um, for these policies that are revisions, we're going to take some of them individually and, um, several of them in blocks. So can I get a motion for I I E, the policy on student schedules and course loads?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item I I E, student schedules and course loads.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, uh, you have one, uh, one.
Madam Chair, you have one, one comment that I have certainly wrestled with this particular policy quite a bit, and I appreciate the indulgence of the board as we have batted this around back and forth. I did come tonight with the intention of still being against this policy because on the principle of the, it is the board's responsibility to, in our policies, to provide direction and our will to the superintendent, and then for the superintendent to enact those policies, and I felt that the phrase, or designate, in the policy does not live up to that particular principle. But in, in discussions that we have had, I've become hopeful that we, we've talked about a policy in the future that would actually delineate what designation means and what it means for the superintendent to designate. That while designation is possible, it does not eliminate responsibility. And having that codified into policy would satisfy, would satisfy me on that. So in the spirit of it's Christmas, all right? I am intending to support this policy tonight with the understanding that we are going to get to that overarching governance policy of what designation delineation means and be voting on that in the near future.
Thank you for your comments there.
Yeah, just a statement, and I applaud my colleague, Mr. Brown on that. Just keeping in mind that, you know, the state of Virginia and the codes of Virginia, you know, clearly lays out the duties and responsibilities of not just school board members, but also the superintendent. So, you know, I don't want to make things redundant, but at the end of the day, the superintendent is responsible for everything, the success and failure of the school division along with us by providing direction, purpose, and motivation and policies, which is what we do. So I don't think we probably, eventually we might, or I think Mr. Brown is still going to support his position. But I just want to make, make sure that we don't specifically start individually tailoring policies to individuals versus the position. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Six zero, Merry Christmas. All right, we'll take the second one individually as well. There was a lot of discussion over this, and I really do like the addition that we did in connecting it to another policy, I think that was really important. So this is IJL, media center material. So do we have a motion for this policy?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept item IJL, media center material revised, as written.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just a point of discussion, I do as well appreciate the revision that has been made to this policy. I know a lot of work has gone in, we've worked on this policy for a number of months now. And I do, I am encouraged by the revision that has been made here. I do see here parental opt-out provisions. I see here that we've made space for students to have alternate materials provided to them, which was, that was an important piece here. And we've also made reference to our other policy where we have some very defined statements and standards as to how we determine sexually explicit content. So I appreciate the diligence that has gone into this, and I do now feel that this is, this is ready.
Thank you for your attention on this particular policy.
Madam Chair, I just was going to echo, I think, your thoughts. I'm glad we connected it to another policy because I think sometimes if you repeat in multiple policies, it gets very long and convoluted. So I think making that connection to incorporate it that way is a good way to do it. So if, you know, as, as things change in either, we're not having to jump around and change four or five policies.
Thank you, I take this moment to thank both you and Dr. Best on the policy committee for bringing that awareness and so that we can streamline, thank you so much. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Amon?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, the next we'll take is a block of three. It is IKB, homework policy, I'm sure the students want to know what that one is about. IKC, class rankings, grade point averages, honor graduates. And then IKD, honor roll. Do I have a motion to accept these policies?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept policy IKB, IKC, and IKD. I'm sorry, homework, class ranking, grade point averages, honor graduates, and honor roll, in that order.
Great, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll say here that I do, here I appreciate that we have gone through the lengths to be very deliberate in what we, what we're expressing homework and class rankings and honor roll, how we're calculating that. So I believe that we've added some, some additional layers of transparency for the public that was, that was lacking previously, that is very important. I also appreciate that we've gone away from this, this notional rubric of this time period per night, per grade, which was very difficult, I believe very difficult for, for staff and students to actually follow. My, my own family, that was, it was a lot more than, you know, than an hour a night spent in doing homework. So I believe that this, the homework policy now more accurately reflects the intention of the board, which is to provide additional rigor and practice for, for students, so I appreciate all the revisions that have taken place here.
Now, a comment that I do have there would be, we really wanted to put, and I have it articulated, that it was in the hands of our educators and the hands of our teachers because they know what's best for our students, so I felt that adjustment made sense there. Any other comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Last but not least, we are going to do a block of two. I have IMD, daily school activity, activities, excuse me. And then IMDB, flag displays. So do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept item India Mike Delta and India Mike Delta Bravo.
Yes.
Daily opening of school activity revised and flag display reviewed as written.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Amon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you so much. And board, thank you for your time and attention on these important policies. For us to come out and be able to all agree was not an easy feat. But that's the work that we do, and we don't shy away from it, I'm glad that we do it. Next, we'll move on to section five, we've got a couple of reports and some information headed our way. So we have five point oh one, the monthly school update, Dr. Parker.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to call Dr. Tina Mang Lamott, our chief academic officer for, who will provide the monthly school update for December.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Parker, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to just highlight some events that happened over the last month for you. The first was our Student Innovation Computer Science Series showcase. The Virginia Commonwealth University, through a state grant called the Advanced Computer Science Education Grant, invited Newport News Public Schools, along with only two other school divisions, Henrico and Richmond City, to partake in the innovation showcase. Two of our schools rose to the challenge. We had Ella Fitzgerald Middle School, and at the bottom picture you can see the whole, there were several teams from Ella down there, and Warwick High School is at the top, and they presented solutions to one of three corporate challenges presented by Capital One, Bank of America, and CarMax. They were led by, I'd be amiss to, or remiss not to mention Coach Brandy Wright, who worked diligently with her students in her technology innovation classroom, and Coach Veronica Monti, who is the AP Computer Science teacher over at Warwick High School. Our students showcased brilliant ideas to solutions presented by three of our corporate partners. The first one was by Capital One, and they had, they were challenged with a phishing scam, and how would you innovate around that? And our Warwick students came up with a quantum encryption that they sold to our corporate leaders. And our middle school students came up with two solutions, a VPN solution, virtual private network solution, and then a gamification. And the gamification was really about education, educating the community on what is phishing and how can you get scammed. So really ingenious ideas. We also came up with some innovative budgeting solutions. Warwick High School came up with, and how to use artificial intelligence to sit there and look at your budget, your expenditures, like what are your habits when you spend? And then to help notify you, hey, you're spending too much, you know, come within your constraints. And then our middle school students, we had some students that just immigrated to Newport News Public Schools. And they really focused on how they could help immigrant families with budgeting solutions, so that was pretty ingenious as well. And then our last middle school student rose to the CarMax solution, and they developed an app that was called Cars to Go that talked about how to sell your cars faster, get them off the lot to make more money, and how you can do that very efficiently. So we're very proud of our students at all the, at Ella and at Warwick for their creative solutions and what they brought to the entire showcase. We also have really good news for you, code.org, we received a computer science award. This award really goes to dedicated leadership in the educational computer science realm. So really looking at what are the schools and the leaders doing to advance computer science education. And we're happy to say that Crittenon Middle School and our STEM director, Denisha Basemore, are the recipients of the Computer Science Leadership Prize. And, and it was a very competitive competition, so we really rose above the rest. You can see that the grant includes funding, equipment, technology, and any instructional resource, teacher professional development, and we get a full year of the code.org computer science discoveries curriculum that we're going to pilot in sixth grade elective ISTEM course. And if we decide that we like the curriculum, then we'll move it forward throughout the all schools in Newport News. So very excited to receive this award, we are going to have a big day of celebration after the holiday. It will be a computer science day where we receive an actual check from code.org, and we'll just make a big celebration of the event, and we'll make sure that all of you are invited. And then lastly, we had a mega, I love that, I was like, is there an acronym for that, it's all caps? I don't think there was an acronym, but we had a mega college and career event at Menchville High School. We brought in twenty-four colleges, total. Of those, we had, not twenty-four, I'm sorry, eighteen colleges that participated and eleven businesses that participated. Of the eighteen colleges, there were nine that were on site to say you're accepted. Not only did we have our university presented from CNU, Hampton University, Johnson and Wales, Norfolk State University, Old Dominion, BCU, but we also had eleven careers, so we had the US Army Reserve, we had the Newport News New Horizon Apprenticeship Program, we had Riverside, At the Table, Centerra, and many other partners. We had financial aid experts that were on site as well. This was so successful that we are planning to have two more events. One will be more of a global college day, and the other will be a same exact college and career event, hopefully maybe further south or north of our division. So that concludes our highlights for this evening, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you. I think our next presentation will move on to five point oh two, our human resources benefits policies, Dr. Parker?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mrs. Brooks now has policies to, now that we finished the instructional policies, it's time to get into human resources.
Yes, and thank you so much for your support with the instructional policies. We really appreciate the hard work, the diligence, and once again, the second review, so thank you very much. So this evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker, it's a pleasure to share highlights from several revised policies with you this evening, which will also mark the start of our policy chapter review process for this school year. Now, the policies and their accompanying procedures were reviewed by the policy committee, which includes our two board members, Dr. Best and Mrs. Amon, along with the principal from the each level, administrators from the Department of Teaching and Learning and the Office of School Leadership, a teacher, our two attorneys, and myself as the policy administrator. As you are aware, in the fall of 2020, we began the, our review of our eleven policy chapters over a five-year period while continuing to develop or update the policies that may be required by state and federal law this, each year. So this evening, we are excited to begin the review of the fifth policy chapter in our timeline, which is on human resources, and it contains over a hundred and twenty-five policies, procedures, and exhibits. So given the size of the chapter, we will bring the policies to you in these three groups, and we'll speak to the first group this evening, which is on employee benefits. So I'd like to thank our Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Nina Farish, and her team for sharing their expertise and a phenomenal level of detail that really enabled us to complete this important work. Now, the committee reviewed the thirty-eight benefits-related policies and procedures, all the documents in the human resources chapter, and made revisions to twenty-one of the documents in the chapter. Now, while some of the committee's time was spent on reviewing changes to many of the procedures, most of the policy revisions were to update and streamline the policy language for greater clarity and to reflect current school division and industry best practices. So at this time, Mrs. Joanne Armstrong, our compensation and benefits supervisor, will highlight just a few of the policies that we are recommending to be revised. Mrs. Armstrong?
Good evening, Mrs. Searls Law, members of the board, and Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Tracy.
We'll begin with the policy on staff wages and salaries. There are two recommended changes to this policy, and they're for clarification only. The first of these explains that the superintendent presents an annual budget to the board for approval, which includes wage and salary for the upcoming year. The wage and salary policy language has been clarified to explain, better explain this process. And all Newport News Public Schools approved wages and salaries are posted on the Newport News Public Schools website under compensation. A link to this webpage has been added to the policy for ease of access. There can be no conversation about the OPEB policy without some background. Other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, are the benefits provided by Newport News Public Schools to employees who retire from Newport News Public Schools. This includes access to health, dental, and vision insurance. It may also include some school board contribution toward the cost of the insurance if the employee meets all eligibility criteria. The board approved significant changes to this policy that were effective on July first, two thousand and eleven. These changes affected the way employee eligibility is determined and created the need for additional policies. Under the July first, two thousand and eleven approved policy, whether an employee is eligible for access to coverage and school board contribution is determined by the employee hire date, retirement date, and Medicare eligibility date. retirement date, and Medicare eligibility date. The recommended revisions do not change the provisions of the policies that went into effect on July 1st, 2011, but rather, the revisions restructure the policies to be more clear. With the restructure, employees and retirees will be able to see themselves in the policy and more easily identify which policy is applicable to their individual situation. There's one recommended revision to the policy on employee leaves of absence. By law, employees are eligible to apply for a family medical leave for their own illness or that of a family member for up to 12 weeks. At the end of the 12-week period, if the employee is unable to return to work due to their own illness, they may be placed on a medical leave of absence. The proposed change asks that the employee apply for the medical leave of absence, just as they would for any other type of leave, rather than human resources placing them on a medical leave automatically. This allows the employee to consider the other options that may be available to them, such as service retirement, disability retirement, or resignation. The policy on sick leave accrual and use permits employees to use sick leave when there's a death of a family member. The time period for this leave is not currently specified in the policy. The standard time period is three days and up to five if travel is needed for the loss of a family member. Language has been added to the policy consistent with this standard, and the policy also allows for employees to request additional time if it's needed. Our last policy this evening is on staff vacations, which currently states that employees may not use accrued vacation until after they've been employed with Newport News Public Schools for six months. Employees begin accruing vacation during their first month of employment. Removing the waiting period allows employees to use accrued vacation during the first six months of their employment, and it also accommodates new employees that have planned vacations in advance of accepting an offer of employment from Newport News Public Schools. I'd be happy to answer any questions before I turn it back over to Tracy. Yes, sir?
When a new employee starts, how much vacation time do they start with?
They start with none at the very beginning, but it accrues each month based on their length of service. So at the end of that month, they would have a day. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So in terms of our next steps, the reviewed and revised policies will come before the school board for action at your January 17th meeting. And once approved, the reviewed and revised policies, procedures, and exhibits will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to our schools and public libraries. So this concludes our report this evening. We will be happy to answer any additional questions or to note your suggestions. So thank you very much.
Okay. Other questions or suggestions at this time? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We are at item 5.03. I believe we're going to have an update from Pat Finneran, a return on Take Your Legislator to School Report.
Thank you very much, and good evening again to all of you. It was, I think, all of our pleasures to have a Take Your Legislator to School Day last Tuesday. And it was held at the Denby Aviation Academy, and this is a copy of the invitation that folks in the community received. And it's, of course, it says, "See STEM in Action, Experience Career Prep Through the Aviation Academy, Pilot of Virtual Aircraft, Experience a Drone Obstacle Course, and Meet and Discuss Key School and Legislative Topics." And I've got to say, the Denby High School and the Aviation Academy delivered it all. They did a great job with everything throughout the whole, the whole event. And our great appreciation to them for hosting this. I'm going to take just a quick look at the event itself. You'll see some familiar faces up there. I think we have our school board chairman trying to pilot a plane. I'm not sure how she did.
Operative word, trying.
Trying, okay. We have our school board vice chairman piloting a drone down the hallway. I don't think she, she crashed it, okay. But there were no injuries, so that's good. Then you see some other, our superintendent greeting everybody. And really what we saw was unmanned aerial vehicles. We were told not to call them drones, but we're still calling them drones because that's what everybody knows. The flight simulators, we also saw what students are doing with wind tunnel testing, and they're using an old NASA wind tunnel to actually look at drag and all types of things that affect flight. We saw the aviation maintenance lab, which actually has two airplanes in it that students are building for flight. We're not sure when they'll be done, and we're not sure who's going to take that first flight, but you might want to volunteer if you have good insurance. No. They're doing a great job with that. Actually, they're studying manufacturing there. So when they do rivets and riveting and all those different things, they're learning how to document all that, the whole manufacturing process that goes along with that. So it's really quite a great experience for them. We really saw at this school workforce development in action. All these things that the students are doing are leading them towards really good careers, careers that they're passionate about, high-paying careers, and careers that are frankly in high demand and are really needed throughout the, throughout the US. And finally, student leadership. We had students who gave the tours, greeted us when we got there, took us around, showed us how things work, demonstrated their knowledge, and just showed how well students are doing in this program. And just an example of, I think, some of the learning that's going on throughout the whole school division as well. I want to say the US Army, the Denby JROTC, did a great job in greeting people in a parking lot, making them feel welcome, bringing them through, through the long hallways to get back to the Aviation Academy, and we heard lots and lots of great comments about the JROTC. Up at the far left-hand corner, at least is how I look at it, is one of our students, Ruger Jennings, who gave a great talk about his passion about aviation and what he wants to do with the future, and how our Aviation Academy and Denby High School are preparing him for that. You see some other students and their, and their staff members up there, and of course, down in the lower right-hand corner, you see the proud principal, Michelle Huff Stettler, and the program administrator, Dr. Aaron Smith. And to the far left, the red plane, that's one of the planes that the students are building. We'll want, actually, you can turn that plane on, that, you can start that plane up. It does have a working motor in it, so pretty cool. Some more pictures of folks around, that came, and I want to say, we had probably four major competing events that morning. And we, the turnout was fantastic with the representation from our legislator, city council, school board, and Education Foundation and others. You can't really see, but Delegate Price is on the left doing flight simulation. Our mayor-elect is up there at the top of the page. Our councilwoman, Tina Vick, is talking with one of the students who gave the tours. Let's see, we have Senator Monty Mason right there in the middle, one of our Education Foundation members, of course, Dr. Parker's, watching one of our newest, our councilmember elect, Cleon Long, try his hand at flying a plane.
And he did crash.
He didn't, he did crash, okay. I think crashing was the mode of the day. And we have Thomas from Congressman Scott's office there, and he did a pretty good job with flying the drone, I thought. And also, Councilmember David Jenkins, talking to one of the, one of the people at the, from the school. So it was a great turnout overall, and those are just some of, there's a lot more people there. But just to sum it up, here's some other folks, some of the people you saw, but some others, there were also representatives from Senator Warner's office and Senator Kane's office that were there to join us. And really, not just to join us, but to see what our students are doing, to talk directly to them. And they came up with some, during the discussion afterwards, I think we heard some good, high praise for what the students are doing, how the program actually works to turn, to turn students into really high-paid aviation folks in the future. And also a good discussion of some of our legislative positions as well. So that's a kind of a look at it, at that. I just want to say again, thanks to Denby, Denby High School, the Aviation Academy, the JROTC, our Community Relations Staff who did a lot of work on that, and of course, all the participants, so. If you have any questions or comments, that's my report.
Do we have any comments?
It was great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for you and the team pulling it together.
All right, thank you.
Okay, 5.04 is the attendance report, 5.05 is the membership report, and 5.06, construction report. Board members, you have received copies of these reports. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item 5.07, comments by the superintendent.
And Madam Chair, I'm going to, I will defer just a short portion of my comments to allow Mr. Fairheart to come back up. We did miss one section of the monthly update, which is some good news, the launching of the facilities master planning web dashboard for the community. And Mr. Brown had a chance to see that. I'd like to give him an opportunity just to quickly go through that, that information that will be available to the public.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, good evening. Certainly, what I feel is a very important piece of the meeting, maybe one of the most important pieces. So we launched our website, so it's now publicly facing. We launched last Thursday. Thanks to Scarlett and her team for pulling this together, Michelle for putting it up on the website, and for the communication that went out. We have screenshots today, but I'll be happy to walk anybody through it. If you have questions, once, you know, basically, we wanted to inform you and allow you the opportunities to spend some time on the website and bring your questions and feedback to us. It's certainly an iterative process, and we'll continue to make updates and enhancements based on feedback we receive, not only from you, but from the public as a whole. So I would encourage your constituents to go to the site as well. So there's an email address down there at the bottom of each of the pages, scip@nn.k12.vaa.us, so pretty easy to remember. This is actually the page that you would land on from our homepage on our website. And if you clicked the top left into the Division-wide Capital Data Summary, you would get our Division-wide data, age of our schools, H-VAC units, capital improvement plan, how it was funded, et cetera, so a lot of the slides that you've seen in the past. As we go down, we have a landing page for each of our school levels. We have preschool, we have elementary, we have middle, we have high, and we have a page dedicated to each individual facility. So if you were to click on Carver Elementary, you would go to Carver. It would give you enrollment data, it would give you location trends, it would give you all the deferred maintenance needs. They're highlighted red, green, and yellow, very much aligned to our document from Cooperative Strategies. So I think, once you dig into the detail, you'll see, I think the other great thing that we did is, this is Warwick High School, this is just an example of a school, so this is some of the information you would see here, program capacity, student enrollment trends, a map to see where it's located, you can see the age of the facility, when it was built, et cetera. But one of the great things, I think, that we were able to do is we were able to align it directly with the document that we received from Cooperative Strategies. These are the priority areas as identified by the committee, safety and security, deferred maintenance, major school renovations, replacing learning colleges with permanent solutions, and then renovating computer labs. So we aligned the needs based on the recommendation from the committee, and that's the same way on each of the sites for each of the schools. So hopefully, you'll see that it's a very useful tool. Hopefully, you'll be able to encourage your constituents to take some time, provide us feedback. As we continue through the process, we've linked it closely with CIP, obviously, because that's going to be our funding mechanism. So as we continue to identify projects that are funded, we'll continue to update this, be it through the operating budget or capital improvement funds. So as projects are completed, we'll update the dashboard as we go. One of the things I joked with Scarlett about is, I think it was really difficult to create. Now, our challenge is going to be to maintain as funding is appropriated and as we're able to complete projects. So with that, I'll pause. Any questions you may have? Certainly encourage you guys to spend some time on the website and let us know what you think.
I had a comment and a question. It's absolutely great. I love the fact that we can go to each individual school and get all of that information, well, anyone can go to each individual school. Had you all thought about, I don't know if the committee possibly having a direct link on the city's page as well, is that something?
I think that's a great suggestion.
I would love, I would love to see the city, again, adopt our facility master plan, or a version of it that incorporates city capital improvement as well as their plan, but this is, this would easily transition to something that the city could have for all citizens. And available to them with good information. One thing Mr. Fairheart did not turn to is if you, when you visit the site, you'll also see the dollars involved with how much it will cost to renovate or meet the maintenance needs of that facility. So I think our citizens will find that that's very good information for them.
Mr. Brown, did you have something?
So I'll just make a comment, similar to the comments made at the, at the meeting, that I believe this, we now have the site that we envisioned when we drafted this policy years, years prior, that this is everything that we laid out and that we envisioned for being able to track on an annual basis, ongoing basis, what is going on in our, on a capital side, so that there's no surprises either for the board or for the public as to the conditions of our schools, and what it's, what it's going to take to actually move our schools to the conditions that we want them to be. So hats off to the team. I know that a tremendous amount of data was pulled in, and as was, as was mentioned, it's going to be, it's, it is a beast to continue to feed and update. One of the things that came up in the meeting is being able to track as we get funding, as we get funding for projects, then retiring certain portions and priorities. And I'll just, I'll make the comment here that we want to be careful that although we do use some unexpendited or end-of-year funds, that is not the primary idea when we created this, this idea. The idea is, as funds come in from city council locally, that we would retire priorities and needs, and not necessarily as we're using funds internally for various things that we retire priorities and needs. So I just want to make that comment, because that came up in the, in the discussion during the committee meeting, that we want to try to keep that at the forefront. And I know that's going to be, make it, make it challenging as to how to, how to track things, but keep in mind that that was the original intent, and that's why we have that focus on the amount of appropriated dollars that we have in our budget, which I'll remind the public still is zero for this year. So we still have $0 appropriated after all the needs have been identified, and so that's going to be work that we have to continue to do in the new year. So, you know, hey, Merry, you know, Merry Christmas, but then Happy New Year. When we, when we get to the new year, we need to start working on getting, moving that dollar from zero, which is currently what it is right now, in the city's portion of CIP, to greater than zero.
Mr. Harris, did you have a comment?
No, well, I was going to use my colleague's choice of words, can I pat myself on the back? No. But no, you know, we started out, the actual meaning of this, of this action was to be a living document, you know, something that years from now, you know, citizens can go on and take a look of where we came from and where we are now. You know, in the past, that wasn't tracked, and sure, we wanted to make sure people understood that, you know, the raw truth of our position. And I think citizens are going to appreciate it, they're going to appreciate the openness, the honesty, and they are more apt to get behind you, behind us, you know, once they know that we have gave them the truth. Because you can only go from there, you know? And I think we spoke about also other actions that took place on November 7th that may give us opportunity, for more opportunities to be able to dialogue with a new administration, so, at the city level. So appreciate all the hard work. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you for the hard work. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, if we could get a how-to sheet for our binders so that we would know how to access and who our contact and contact individuals are when we might have questions specifically. when we might have questions specifically? That would be great for our binders.
So Madam Chair, without further ado, I'll go ahead and read my comments, because I am acknowledging some great work around the division and some great staff and students. So I'd like to go ahead and close out with those remarks.
Great.
And I will start with, I, along with several members of the school board, attended the Mayor Price's Final State of the City event at the Ferguson Center on November 16th. And we don't want to forget that, because we saw our great Warwick High School, actually, it was Harriet High School fan, come out and introduced the mayor in a grand fashion, and that was a very, we were very pleased to see them involved in that process. I'd also like to extend our appreciation to the mayor and his staff for commemorating some of Newport News Public Schools awards and accomplishments during his remarks. Newport News seniors attended the Career Discovery and Recruiting Event at Virginia Peninsula Community College in November. During the event, students interacted with Virginia Talent Pipeline employers and toured Newport News Shipbuilding. Several students also competed in the welding competition with Nicholas Jordan of Minchville High School placing second. And congratulations to Nicholas. And while at the event, several Newport News students were offered postgraduate job opportunities. Okay, everybody hear that? All right. Congratulations to our students, and a special thank you to Virginia Peninsula Community College for hosting the great event. I also want to recognize Sedgfield Elementary School First Grade Teacher Stephanie Williams. Mrs. Williams was recently featured in a story on Wavy TV 10. And if you haven't had a chance to see that, we definitely, I think we put the link on our webpage. Ms. Williams was born with brittle bone disease, a painful disease which results in her using a wheelchair to get around. This did not stop her from becoming a teacher. The story talks about how Ms. Williams served as a role model to her students, and her story should inspire all of us. Visit our website, and you will see that prominently displayed, and we encourage everyone to review that, to view that if you have not had a chance to see it. She really makes us feel Newport News proud. Our board members and I had an enjoyable and informative time at the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Conference Convention in Williamsburg last month. Over 900 school governance leaders from around the Commonwealth attended, which offered workshops, clinics, and critical issue sessions. As has become a tradition, student mentors and staff from our telecommunications center served as the videographers for the convention. Thanks to our telecom supervisor, Ray Price, and program graduates and student mentors Colin Smalls and Brandon Hedgepith for covering the event and producing the promotional segments. And as a reminder, tomorrow, Wednesday, December 14th, is a scheduled half-day for students. Our students will attend school in the morning, and they will use the afternoon for independent learning at home while teachers participate in staff development. All schools and offices will be closed from December 19th through the 30th for winter break. Schools and offices will reopen now that will be Tuesday, January 3rd, for class for students, and January 2nd will be a workday for teachers and staff, designated staff, as we allow our teachers the adequate planning time to get ready for a great new year. And I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. I hope that you enjoyed your winter break, that you enjoy your winter break, and have some special time with family. And I will stop there, Madam Chair, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Now we'll move on to item six, which is another opportunity to hear from the public. Do we have any cards? Now we will move on the agenda to matters by the school board. So we will begin with Ms. Manadero, our student representative.
Thank you. I'd first like to say just congratulations for the reelections. It's great seeing all your family support you, so that was good. Also, I look forward to this, the new year, so we can all come back refreshed. And for Sage, we plan on kickstarting the Student Exchange, and hopefully we can get that rolling. And then, I'd also like to mention you, Dr. Parker, you talked about the VSBA conference, and I attended that as a student representative. And it was really great being able to talk to other student representatives across the entire state and get to see how they function and like their boards, and learning more about what they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, greeting everyone, and I want to start off again by congratulating Mr. Ely, because I know that, I believe this is our last time together on this day as all together. And so, Mr. Ely, I wanted you to know that these years have meant a tremendous amount to me, and I've very much enjoyed being your colleague and appreciated the passion that you have brought and the perspective that you've brought to education. Definitely a better board member for having served with you, and I wish you all the success in your new endeavor as City Council member. I know you won't be a stranger, and we'll get to, we'll hear from you quite often. And I'm going to say as well, congratulations to my colleagues for your reelection. That was something that I did get a chance to mention when I had a chance to present at the VSBA conference. Part of the work that we have put in as a board, as a governance team, I think is a reflection of the strength of what the community has said in all of us. They have, all of us that were up for election this last time, we all were reelected. And I heard from quite a few people in the community that one of the things that they liked about our board is how professional and collegial that we are with each other. And that's, it doesn't go, it doesn't go without work. I know that a lot of work goes into that. I've mentioned very many times that I'm a difficult, hard pill to swallow, right? And I appreciate all the work that has gone into getting along well with me, and that we get along well together. We've accomplished quite a bit together. Because we didn't talk too much about, or we, in our oath of office, we didn't go through our whole preamble. I won't try to tick off all of the items that I want to accomplish in this next term, but I'm going to highlight a few things that are in the short term that I am excited about. I'm very happy to have another four years in this job. I can safely say that I do, and I did not realize this when I started, I love this job. I truly love being your school board representative. It brings a tremendous amount of purpose and passion in my life that I did not realize that it would bring to me when I first started this eight years ago. And I suppose I'm a glutton for punishment, I went for four more, so it's going to be 12 years before, this is all, before this is all done. But it has been, every moment of it has been tremendously rewarding. I reflected quite a bit in this last campaign on how we have now gone to a less than 1% dropout rate. And I know that that is a tremendous accomplishment, a testament to all the hard work by everyone in this division. And I'm glad to have been able to play a role in that. So going into this next term, you know, we heard tonight, the Capital Reserve Fund. I really am excited about having that tool in our toolbox. I'm going to advocate for that as strongly as I can to try to get that legislation moved through, because I think that's really important. We're going to need reserve dollars to take care of our schools. Summer school is, has been, and still will be a high priority to me. That I'm going to continue that push, so get ready. January is coming, and we said, hey, let's talk about it in January. So I'm laying it down right now. Okay, so January is coming, and let's talk about summer school in January. So we're ready for an increased enrollment in summer school and taking advantage of having more kids moving through summer school, both for advancement and for enrichment and for remediation as needed. I want to see students get registered to vote. I think that that is an important part of being citizen-ready, that we can offer our students. And I think we can do it in a completely nonpartisan way, by helping students to be civically engaged and helping them get registered to vote. I'd like to see us adopt a policy on that. And then as well, the American Mathematics Competition. I'm very proud of that we are one of the few divisions on the peninsula that does do the American Mathematics Competition Grade Eight. So, but I'm looking for AMC 10, 11, and 12, right? American Mathematics Competition 10, 11, and 12. So looking to have that installed. And then, of course, as well, middle school sports. That that was, I called that my biggest accomplishment in my second term, was us getting middle school sports added to our budget. And I want to see, of course, that continue to expand. So as always, I have more ideas than I have time to actually implement in the next four years. But we're going to, somehow we'll get it done. We managed to get a lot of things done, and planning on getting these things done as well. Look forward to doing them with all of you. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The Seaman?
Okay. Hard act to follow, but I think I will keep it short and sweet. Congratulations to my colleagues on your reelection and John on your election to City Council. I look forward to seeing you on council. And I've enjoyed working with you, and I will, I will keep it short and sweet, as I know everyone would like to get home. I'll just say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and come back ready to jump in in January.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. John, congratulations on a great victory. This is not a goodbye, but just a farewell. And I want to thank you for all that you have done and for all that I know you are going to do on the City Council. And we look forward to your continued support. And also congratulations to my colleagues for being reelected. All right, the citizens chose great choices, and I really appreciate that. I've had a wonderful time working with you, and you all are special to me. Thank you, Dr. Parker, and to your administration and your staff, all the way from bus drivers to cleaning folks, to the cafeteria workers. I really appreciate the hard work and dedication that you all provide to our students. It is evident in just daily interaction with them. So I just want to make sure that you all are acknowledged and that I really, really, really thank you all for all the hard work. I know it's a tough job. I couldn't do it probably, but I really appreciate that. The last two years have been tough, and I think we've shown the peninsula, you know, a good school to be, that sticks together, work hard together, and we can be successful. So thank you, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you so much. Dr. Best?
Okay, I will be brief. I wrote some remarks. As I reflected upon the campaign season, it was certainly like no other, being a post pandemic, a new election season, and tied to our national election. All factors, in my opinion, that made the campaign season longer and more challenging. Despite these factors, I was humbled by this victory. It acknowledges my passion and hard work that I put into a position where tough and sometimes unpopular decisions are made. It is my greatest honor to accept the responsibility of serving on the school board. I would like to thank my family, friends, advisors, donors, and volunteers. Thank you for believing in me. I love and appreciate you. To my fellow school board members who were victorious, congratulations. For the next four years, I look forward to advancing, celebrating, and collaborating with the amazing students, staff, families, and partners that we call Newport News Public Schools. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Ely. Going to miss you, but not really, because I'll still be seeing you quite a bit, and we'll talk quite a bit. But John was like our direct link to younger people. They, everybody had his phone number, so we're going to miss you, John, and we're looking forward to working with you on the City Council. And I would just like to tell everyone to please try to get some rest on your winter break vacation. Just try to get some rest and come back refreshed, because you know, the hardest part is when we return. That's going to be the, we in it to win it. So enjoy your break, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm changing things up a little bit. I'm going to have John go after me, so he's kind of the last thing we hear at his last board meeting. So I will just say that I'm honored and humbled to continue to serve. I do not take it for granted that I sit here, and I am very thankful that I get to be here another four years. It's funny, I felt like Mr. Brown read my notes. I literally love doing this. I did not have any idea that I would to the extent. It brings me great joy. It's challenging, but at the same time, it is rewarding. So I must give immense thanks to God, an appreciation for my family as a child and as an adult. And so in the process of doing this work, I've found that family extends to those who are on this stage up here. And so that leads me to John. John, I am not telling you goodbye. But what I am going to tell you is that you have made this board better. And you have made it better for the students and the families in Newport News. And I know that now you have an additional platform to continue doing the same. And I expect to see it. And we will miss you. So now, we will hear from John.
I just want to say thank you to the community, to the amazing team we, my family up here. Y'all are my colleagues, y'all, my family. This is probably the hardest speech I've ever made in my life. I love you all, and we're going to continue to do great things, because we love Newport News. We want the best for Newport News, we want the best for this community. And I always will have Newport News in my heart, in this community. I know a lot of the senior staff, I'm not going to be worrying y'all no more. I'll call them in a heartbeat. I'll call Rashad in a heartbeat, but it's just the love I have for this city, and just want the best. Congratulations to my colleagues for y'all reelection. Couldn't think of better people to serve Newport News. Douglas, get on my nerves, but nobody else better not say nothing about Douglas. I'm the only one to say something about Douglas. This is amazing board, and the community is blessed to have leadership to represent Newport News, because everybody on this board cares about the citizens and cares about the community. And I'm just excited to join this City Council, to pass the torch, all the great work we've done on school board, to have that work done on a City Council and have it done in great faith. I just thank God that I know the day will come where you have two boards of government can get together and get along and do what's best for Newport News and that which have self-motives. And I'm just thankful that I have the opportunity to serve in a different capacity. When I ran this election, I wasn't too worried. I ran for the seat before and I lost. But this time was a different feeling, it was the Lord was with me this time. He was guiding me throughout the way. This year's been challenging, losing my grandfather. My grandmother gave her a few months to live. My mother's fiance passed, and trying to run a campaign was very hard. But God has the victory, and I'm excited to continue to serve Newport News and serve Newport News in a different capacity and serve it with all of y'all. I will have y'all back, whatever the school system need. We will have those conversations to make sure we're getting that. I just want to say thank y'all so much for being my family, not my colleagues, not my friends. I can see y'all as family. So thank y'all again, and thank y'all, all of you, for always supporting me, and thank you to the citizens of Newport News.
At this time, our Clerk, Ms. Moore Buffalo, will share the timeline for filling the Newport News School Board vacancy appointment procedures.
Good evening. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the School Board of the City of Newport News may appoint a qualified voter of the South District to the School Board within 45 days of the office becoming vacant. The appointed member of the School Board shall hold the office until a special election is held. The timeline is as follows. Early January 2023, School Board announces vacancy appointment procedures. Application and procedures posted online. Mid-January 2023, list of applicants posted online. Closed meeting of the School Board to interview selected applicants. Closed meeting of the School Board to review interviewed applicants. January or February 2023, School Board votes on appointment. Appointee takes oath of office. And that concludes the vacancy appointment procedures, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that is the end of our meeting for this year. So Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We look forward to seeing you back. We look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.